We call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council for February 11th, 2020. As normal, we will start with a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. For the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Sacks to lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to introduce Devon Eckstein, who is in the Engineering Department, who is going to be the substitute town clerk tonight. So Devon, thank you. This is your first time in on the button?
Yes.
We'll be gentle. We have two public hearings tonight. One, the first one is Comcast franchise agreement. Randy, do you want to give us any background on that?
Yes. This agreement would basically be a non-exclusive agreement to provide cable and internet phone services to town similar to Chantel. It's basically competition to Chantel throughout town. The agreement, they would pay basically the standard franchise agreement-type arrangements to the state. And there's, I guess, some other particular provisions in there regards to provision of services at certain deadsties. But basically, as I say, it would be a non-exclusive agreement similar to what we have with Chantel.
Anyone here to address this matter? Hearing no one, we'll move on to the second public hearing of MMI Atlantic franchise agreement. Does this work for you?
Yes. This is basically a pass-through project or a fiber project. They would come into town on North Franklin Street, go to Depot Street, to West Main Street, and then onward to Floyd. Basically, through this corridor, they've agreed to give us a fiber connection, well, basically a microduct inside their cable. It would include 12 strands of microfiber, basically, that the town's used. That's what VDOT standard is. Also, they would have to pay the town a linear footage fee as long as the line is in, is basically maintained. And that would be a annual fee.
Okay. Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearings. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Sam, don't be too quick.
Yeah, we're trying to get you quick. Yes. I'd like to make an adjustment. I'd like to recommend that we put on the agenda discussion about the block on Main Street.
You want to do what with that? What's your recommendation?
I just want to provide you with some additional information.
Okay. We will have that under discussion of Mayor and Council.
I'd like to add a change, too, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss the resolution for bowling creative media as its own line item.
Okay.
And that could be under discussion and action by Mayor, if possible.
I think so. We have a resolution in here somewhere. I'm sure it's for a call to be approved in a minute. So I have a request to modify the agenda. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, would you call and roll?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
This is six eight. Thank you very much. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of January 28th, 2020.
I so moved to approve the minutes.
The consent agenda?
Second.
Okay.
Two.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Very good. That is six eight. Under introductions and presentations, we have Ernie Wade of the Qualus Club of Christiansburg to request street closures for the 2020 Wilderness Trail Festival. Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with the council and staff, I'd like to thank you for all the past support you gave us. I think everyone agreed probably last year's event was the best one we've ever had. Looked at when you talked to them, certainly the largest crowd we've ever had. And the weather was a lot better than it was the year before that, when it rained out. So we're asking exactly the same thing we had last year. Same streets closed, and we'll have the same entrances and exits as we had last year. If I had to answer your question, I've got Jim and Steve Simmons here to help me if I get in trouble.
I brought some heavyweights with me.
And I guess the police department has been notified. Has the police department been notified?
Yes, we've filed all the papers and forms and ready to go.
Part of our events application, correct?
Yeah.
Where our committee actually meets and the police are involved in that.
I was able to attend it last year, and so many people really seemed like they enjoyed themselves. There was so many vendors, and it was just a good thing. And I don't know, Wilderness Trail Days has really become the top thing of the town of Christiansburg, really. You guys should be very proud of that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. We had 149 listeners last year, down politicians. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Only thing I would like to say, Ernie, and Jim and Steve, is just pass along, at least my thanks. You guys do a great job every year. I know the community looks forward to it, and me as well. So thank you.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you. Next presentation is from IT Director Craig Hatmaker regarding Town Council Chambers' layout and audiovisual options. You got that thing working tonight?
I hope so. First of all, I want to thank you all very much for allowing me to postpone this presentation from the last meeting to this meeting so I could attend to staff members of Mother's Gym. So thank you very much for allowing that. So, this is about this council chambers. We're going to make, we want to make some changes. To start off with, Marissa asking for this particular display, that we only have one display room for the people on that side of the building. Things are tough. So let's take a look and see what we have. One of the things that we found out was that the audio sometimes gets out on us. And the reason for it is because underneath the desk is the mixer that currently, and the amplifiers for all the microphones. We'd like to move that out of, from underneath your desk to that closet over there. And that'll cost us about $500. We're going to need to have what's known as a stage snake, that's that bottom light picture, which will go underneath the floor and into the closet. And that'll get the mixer and the amplifier in that room away from being kicked or accidentally turned off or whatever. So that's the first thing we'd like to try to do. Any discussion about that particular item? The next thing that we'd like to do is, this is addressing the video, that right now we have just one screen. One of the things we are proposing is that we have two screens, so that we have one here and one there, which will allow people to see the screens a little bit better depending on where you are in the room. This will help the audience as well as the council members. Two screens and two projectors, materials is about $7,500. These are not to exceed estimates, and labor of $2,200. Any questions?
I have a question for the other one that you were talking about, microphones. You want to put the box inside the closet?
Inside that closet, yes.
Wouldn't it be better to have it, like, out here for Melissa to have, or like, for Andreas to access, or?
Because you would like to have it accessed. That'll be a great segue to another part of this presentation.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's great. I appreciate it. Any more discussion on this?
Did you allow, is that our labor, or is that hired-out labor?
This is hired-out labor.
Okay.
We'd also like to improve the video capture. As you can see, back in the back of the room, we have one camera. And so when the person who is speaking, I can see that right now, no one can see me speaking, but they can see what's being presented over there. And of course, it's coming at us at an angle, so it's a little awkward. What we would like to do is, we'd like to install fixed mount cameras in the ceiling that would cover all the areas where people speak, as well as get the pictures off of the computers directly onto the camera. This way, we would have a much better historical record. Whoever is speaking could be on screen at the same time. Whatever's being displayed could be on screen. We could have split screens. And if you're asking a question from Marissa, if you're asking me a question, we would see you asking a question and me responding in split screen. So we'd like to install these. Materials, it's about $4,000 in cameras, and labor about $1,500. Any questions about that? And this is for Johanna's question. So one of the problems of having the mixer inside or underneath the desk or inside the closet is that it can't be adjusted. So if one person's speaking loudly, another person is speaking softly, we can't change those microphone levels. That makes it harder for people to hear to hear. It also makes it harder for you to hear, and it also makes it harder for the historical record to be heard. We would like to get a remote mixer. So the lower part, in the picture, you see two parts. One looks like an iPad. It is indeed an iPad. The iPad would be out here in the room, where somebody could adjust the levels in the room. And the lower part would be in the closet. The iPad would talk to that part and would adjust the levels so it could be recorded properly. Materials cost is about $800 for the mixer, $300 for the iPad, and labor about $1,000. Any questions on this? And lastly, right now, the audio of this is being produced by a small amplifier in the podium and coming out of the speaker in the front. We would like to capture that wirelessly so it goes into the mixer and then into the historical record. Cost of that is about $1,000, and we would provide the labor. So these are all of those improvements that we could make, and the costs, and what their impacts are. Johanna, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
So is that about $20,000?
Roughly. If we did all of them, yes.
Is there any more of the other work that we're paying outside from our IT department that can be done within our departments?
Well, one of the things we did proactively, because we were pretty sure the snake was going to be approved at $500, we'll probably just do it anyway unless you guys told us not to, because we had public works come out and drill the holes through the concrete underneath the desk and in the closet. So we've already taken care of the labor for that particular request. Where we can do it, we will, as long as it's within our skill set. There are some things that I'm not trusting myself to do, so I would want to have experts. Cameras is a big one that I'm worried about.
Are you saying that it's better to do all these at one time, or would it be equal maybe to do it in stages?
I prefer stages, personally.
All right. And what would be the first stage?
The snake, the stage snake, getting the mixer out of here and into the closet.
Would that, would do that maybe for this coming year, and then maybe something?
Just coming week.
Maybe two weeks, but, yeah. Yes, I would do that as soon as possible.
How far out would you like to stage it?
I'd love to not do it more than, if it took six months, I would be disappointed it took that long.
Okay.
I would like to do it within maybe three months.
So at least by the end of our fiscal year, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have the funding, Randy?
I think we could accommodate it within budget.
Can it come, where will it come out of?
I would probably charge it to IT somehow, but, you know, it's one of those things, if it's a council wish, I don't think it would necessarily, it wouldn't take a budget amendment, necessarily, just because of the value. You know, over $10,000, up to $10,000 line item transfer, Val or I could approve. This amount, I think council would have to approve, but it wouldn't take a formal budget amendment.
And I'd like to explain, too, that I did have several people approach me who watch this on YouTube and TV, and they couldn't hear very well, which is, and also, we had a hard time seeing on the screen, which is what prompted me to question, what can we do to make it better? So I appreciate what you've pulled together, definitely. I guess that'll help.
And the sound's gone out twice.
Right.
Just in the past few months. When was the last time we had an upgrade? I was here when we got the...
Probably when we put the system in, when we put the holes in the table for the table system.
$2,000?
Because we were relying on the camera before that.
Which was a big deal.
And that was probably, that was probably 10, 12 years ago.
You know, if I could interject, I'd really like to see council go ahead and give him a nod over the next three months to, three, four months, let's get it done. I mean, we are, we're a lot better than we were when I came on council 20 years ago, 22 years ago. But we are, we do need some upgrades. We do need to make this so easier for our residents and our guests here and the audience to be able to hear us. So, yeah, I mean, if that's, we're not, can't make that motion, but it would give you a head nod.
We can make a motion, put it in our, yeah, our discussion and action by Mayor and Council. I'll make a motion.
Do it now.
Do you want to do it now?
I'm fine with it, and I think also, this is a small aside, but Mr. Hatmaker is with us now, and he had a gap where we had some unemployment, too. So we had, I mean, and that salary is assigned to IT as well, right?
Correct.
So we also had a gap there, probably a month and a half or two months, approximately, is that about, like?
Correct.
So a couple months of salary that was, and not that, you know, but that, it's probably going to end up being a wash when you look at the budget.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it.
Yeah, so we had some savings, you know, transitional savings, we call them transitional savings.
So if he had something in mind to spend, it would snag it from him.
Well, this would be a good use of that. It'd be good recapture.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And I think this is, kick it up a notch as far as openness and people being able to watch it, so.
So, Henry, do I have a motion from you? Yes.
Yes, I'll second.
You have a second? Got a motion and a second to go ahead and proceed with the plan as presented? Any other discussions?
I mean, Randy, you see the, what Brad just presented, is that correct, right?
Yes. That's correct.
Since we're all doing all this with recording and all kinds of stuff and changes here, I would love to be able to have this recording abilities with other committees, so we can record other, you know, other meetings that we have that are taking place here in the town, and the rest of the citizens don't know what's going on. I think even, we had a central business meeting just a little bit ago, and all the kind of meetings that we have, planning meetings and all the other committees that we have, it would be really good to have all those recorded and posted out there for the community to watch.
Well, I believe, once we upgrade this, the Planning Commission could easily be recorded.
Correct.
I would assume, because it's in this room.
Anybody who thinks this room can be recorded?
But I would, and Joanna, it's a great idea, but we'd need to see how much it's going to cost, the implementation of it, and I think that's something that we can discuss as a council prior, during the budget cycle. Because this is something that, if we decide we want to do this, then that's something we have to anticipate the cost for next year. And I would say there's two places we need to have some sort of video, is one, the conference room back behind here, and the town manager's mini-conference room, is what I'll call it, over there, because there are meetings that occur there as well. So.
So we have a motion to proceed with what has been presented tonight. Have a second?
I have a second.
About two, three seconds.
I'll tell you what, I think Joanna was going to do it first, and then Marissa, you second.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's cool.
That's fair enough.
Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
This is six eight.
Thank you for putting the word.
Thank you. Can I tack on one thing to that? We're being streamed right now, which is a great idea. So I'd like, you know, during our discussions for the extra video, to possibly see if we can stream same time, at least to the town web, social media sites where it can be shared.
Next is our citizens' comments section. Anyone interested may come to the podium, name and address, discuss any items of concern in three minutes. Is there anyone here to address the table?
How are you all doing? My name's Cody Bentley with at 1295 Rafford Street. Obviously, Christiansburg, I won't be here. I'm here to address last week's meeting. So I wasn't able to come due to prior obligations, but it's about the zoning of 1305 Rafford Street, the brick house that must be turned into an apartment complex. I'm here to state that I have like a privacy fence between our two dropways. I had past issues when I was a pulmonary specialist, and being in an apartment complex, I think I would continue to see those issues arise. So, we kind of...
Can you maybe say a little louder? I just had a hard time hearing you.
You're standing too far from the microphone. You got to hand down. They got it set for me, so.
I'm a little taller.
If you could, I'm sorry, just start from the beginning.
So I live at 1295 Rafford Street.
Okay.
The house next to me is 1305 Rafford Street. Used to be a pulmonary specialist. I would like to have a privacy fence dividing those two properties if it's going to be developed as an apartment complex, just due to the fact that I already had issues with the 10, 15 cars that were occupying the parking spaces. People coming over into my property, throwing cigarette butts, throwing cigarette butts on the opposite side of my flower garden and stuff like that. It's just kind of, everybody likes the privacy. So I think if it's going to be developed as a apartment complex, I would like to see some sort of dividing row of hedges, eight-foot privacy fence, something like that.
Thank you for pointing.
May I ask a question of the Speaker?
Certainly.
Have you, is, have you talked to the LePlantes about this?
I have not.
Okay, so this is...
My mother actually addressed me after the last meeting, so I spoke with her, but I did not remember my coding.
Yeah. I couldn't come last week, but...
Are you the, I'm sorry, are you the person that has the property on the right side as soon as you're going up the driveway?
Yeah, if you're facing the house, my house is on the right.
On the right?
Yeah, that white house.
So do you have a brother, or somebody come the one time to the planning department? Was that related to you?
That was the property in front of his property. So he's on the corner, he's the house that's behind us.
He's right behind it.
Okay, so where there is like the, there's parking lots, and then there is nothing. Is that what you're talking about? Is that where your house is?
Yeah, so my parking lot and the parking lot for the 1305 used to be a shared driveway, like, 20, 30 years ago. So now it's just basically a huge parking lot with a couple concrete stops for the cars in the parking spaces.
So you access your house from a different?
I do.
Okay.
They have interest on the other side.
I actually go up Meek Street and then take a left into my driveway, but 1305 is accessible with the Crescent driveway.
Randy, you can have them out, and the others can put in the main.
So the property in front of you has a fence. You guys don't have nothing to protect you from the parking lot on the left?
Correct. There was a fence there many years ago. There's still remnants of a fence there. I suppose it had fallen down or was structurally unsound, and it was removed. But it was just a chain link fence, and that really wouldn't be ideal, especially for...
Well, and there is so much concrete on that side.
We may want to just move this into discussion by Mayor and Council, because we are going to take action on this tonight. So if that's all right, we can bring that up in the...
Yeah, I think so.
I think so, okay. We'll have that, we'll have that map up in front of us when we, when we discuss this in 20, 30 minutes.
20, 30 minutes?
I appreciate your point.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Hearing number one, I will close the citizens' comments. We will move to committee reports. Mr. Bishop and Mr. Stikes, Street Committee report.
Yes, we have two simple issues before council tonight. The first one is on South Franklin Street near the southern town limits. It's a residential property that has, is two lots adjacent to each other, same family, and the property is being, you see the shed, point to the shed right there. They're making a simple adjustment to include the shed, the outbuilding there, to tie it with a parcel with the house to the left, which is existing. And there's going to be another house on the adjacent parcel, Lot 3A. So they're tightening up their lot lines so that you don't, it's not really an encroachment because the same property on our own, both parcels, but now that it's going to become a separate parcel for a family member, they're tightening up the property lines to include the garage with the property on the left. So it's a very simple lot line adjustment, and it conforms with our ordinance and the recommendation from the Street Committee, which is also a motion to approve the plot as presented.
Got a motion?
That was a motion.
I'll second.
Did you second it?
I think you did.
Got a motion and a second to approve that lot as presented. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Six eight, thank you. Second one?
The second is a subdivision that we acted on one or two meetings ago, maybe three, but in the last two or three meetings, we acted to, this is along Sleepy Hollow Drive and Leno Hill subdivision, and there are two parcels there now, because we created, we subdivided, our last action as a council was to approve a plot that showed two lots there. And now, the adjust, there's a request to adjust the lot line going between the lots, dividing lots, to accommodate an existing fence that's on the parcel, because there is going to be a house on the right, and also a permanent, there's going to be utility easement that runs concentric with the lot line, which is the dark shaded area, is also a public utility easement. So easement is going to shift from along the old property line to along the new property line. So it basically has a jut in the property line, and the utility easement is going to shift over along with that. So, that's it. The Street Committee reviewed it, and it conforms with our subdivision ordinance and the recommendation, which is also a motion, is to approve the plot as presented.
And the shift is almost nothing.
It's just a few feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop and Ms. Stikes, the Central Business District Committee?
I think, Andrew, you had some information on this, if you don't mind sharing for the safe ride.
Sure. Yes, so this is a single proposal to, to the committee, or what the council had approved last year. We had provided service from 10 to 2 AM last year, and we had about five cloud riders, and it was the Saturday prior to St. Patrick's Day, and that's what's being proposed this year for March 14th, to provide a safe ride to anyone that would need it, and you would promote it and provide the number for anyone to call that would need to ride, and it would be an SUV that would be provided by, by who to ride with the driver, to provide rides with... And it would be an SUV that would be provided by, by Hooty Ride with the driver, to provide rides in the town of Christiansburg. And it was the same price as was offered last year, which was $300 for the. There, they, they did have the intention to work with them over New Year's. There was some insurance. I knew issues that the company has experienced. They have since, they do have the insurance for this SUV and we verified that. So they are, they are moving forward. The new insurance company does have a regulation that they say that they will not insure vehicles over 15 years old. So that does eliminate some of their older van stock that they are currently selling right now. And so, so it has been out in the public and you may have seen advertisements for that. So I did want to just provide a bit of background for, for this proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions or additional people.
So this is a great service. Is there any liability besides, you know, them having an insurance for them to cover them? Is there anything that they can come back after us, if anything, by providing the service to their community?
It really is a service provided by Hooty Ride. It would be covered under their policy.
You know, I'm all for, for support on drivers under the influence. But St. Patrick's Day this year is on a Tuesday and we're providing this on a Saturday. Is that right?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not sure if St. Patrick's Day is that big of a deal here in Christiansburg. And you say that we had some traffic last year. I, I was just wondering if, if this is, if this is needed at all. Since it's, you know, three or four days off and, and it's not that big of a deal to start with. Somebody can tell me I'm wrong.
I think most of the restaurants and establishments are trying to do a, a big Saturday push because people have Sundays off, so on and so forth. And that's the opinion I've had, talking to some, some other restaurants that would like to have it that day. So, I mean, it makes sense to me.
What is the max amount of people that can use this service?
It would just be based on demand. So it would be up to six people at one time. And so they, they would run continuously for, for that four hour period. Four hour portion. So it would be as, as many people as they could service within that time period.
I, I think it's a nice statement to make. I think it supports our business community. And I think it, I think it's just the right statement to make that we're wanting people to be safe and we're providing them an easy choice to make a, a smart decision.
And that's throughout the town. That's not one restaurant. There's any, any others?
It's throughout town and, yeah.
This isn't something, in light of recent events, this isn't something we offer. This was brought by Ms. Sachs a few years ago. Which the, the goal was to keep drunk drivers off the road. So if it's Saturday and not Tuesday, even though I think, I'm not sure of our, our town's participation in St. Patty's Day. I think any day that you can keep somebody from driving under the influence is a good thing. So.
And I'd like to, to point out too, that the cost is very minimal. It's $300. I thought that's very fair to even keep one person from driving while intoxicated.
You know, I'm certainly not going to fight this. I'm not, I'm really, I'm not sure if everybody really knows, but every, every year about a thousand people here in the state of Christiansburg get killed in an alcohol-related crash. And so I'm certainly not going to fight this. I just wanted to throw it out and see what other people thought.
For good. Andrew, I might have missed it. Did you get a town that, that being serviced 10:00, 2:00 in the morning? Is that something to understand? That they do, they do have insurance? Hooty Ride does have proper insurance? Or is this upon them getting the proper insurance?
No, they, they currently have it.
Okay, very good. So we have a, I don't guess we have a motion on the floor yet?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the Safe Ride Home program for Saturday, March 14th, 2020, prior to St. Patrick's Day, using one car for one night through Hooty Ride at a cost of $300.
A second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew's just going to stay up there today.
What I'm passing out is this slate of candidates put forward by the central business committee for the proposed Public Arts Advisory Board. As you recall, this board, the bylaws were approved by town council in, back in December. And the purpose of the, the board would be to come up with a public art plan for Christiansburg, for all of Christiansburg, and to, to implement projects to promote public art and its awareness within the community. And so before you is a slate of, of seven members that was recommended by the central business committee. And, and they are artists as well as business owners, as well as communications experts. So there's a, they have various, they run the gamut of professional experience. And, and so the way the bylaws were set up is that there would be, in the initial appointment, there would be at least two that would have, that would have a staggered term. So we randomly selected from the central business, from what they're recommending, the names are recommended. We randomly selected three to serve with two-year terms. Hooty Ride would be the maximum length of the term. And then two would be, would have a one-year term. And then at this point, the nominees that are before you are Paula Alstom, Charlie White Scarver.
Are they here?
So they're, they are not here this evening, but that is for the discussion of, of council. And I'm just putting, putting out the names for your consideration. And Dakota Spradlin and Heather Browning were for one-year terms. And then Katie Shepherd was for a two-year term. And then there's a staff liaison, which would be a non-voting staff liaison. That is recommended to be myself at this point until there may be someone more appropriate from staff that could fill that role. And then, and then Ms. Sachs would, would be the council representation.
I would like to be a part of that.
And that's, that's the central business committee that recommends this slate of candidates. And I'll just put that out there for discussion.
Can, can you give us this an overview on what the, the advisory board will do?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we found in central business that, you know, we were getting very tied down with some art projects and determined that in order to gain some momentum and get some projects finished, it was better that we create an art board committee that can handle some of these concerns for the citizens. So therefore we can make a lot more gains a lot faster. And while reviewing the applicants, which I do appreciate every single one that applied, if I could take them all, I would have because they were all very excellent. But we did pick a variety of backgrounds, so everybody is represented. It's, it's not all artists or all business owners. It's a pretty good mix. So we felt very comfortable about these names and presenting them to everyone here for approval.
And there's no compensation for these?
No, there's not. This is all volunteer. These are just citizens and business owners who want to be involved.
So we appreciate their time and expertise that they're going to donate to our town.
Yes. And hopefully we can, if this goes through, we could have them in.
And as far as the two-year, one-year term, that was done by what? A blind draw, the names were put in a cup and drawn. That's how these two-year and one-year were sent to personnel.
Yes, we try to do it as randomly as we can.
I, I, this is the first time I've seen the list. I have a deep respect for committee recommendations because they serve our council very well. To dig in on this, I have a couple thoughts on this and I'd like to, I'd like to have a chance to digest this. I talked earlier this evening with one council member, but I'd like to put this off for two weeks and I would like to. And one thought is this. I'll just go ahead and share one thought with you. It's been a very vibrant committee is the Bike Way Walkway Committee. And it, it doesn't have a rigid structure like this. And actually, we've, we've had some very interesting members. If you show up for more than two meetings, then you're on the committee. And so I have some additional, but seen this list for the first time, but also respecting a great deal our, our, our committee recommendation. I still would like to have a chance to digest this and also maybe talk with, with, talk with other council members before we take action. So I'm going to recommend, or my position is, thank you. I'd like, before we act on this, I'd like to give it a little more thought.
Absolutely. If we can just put it on the next agenda, that would be great.
I would like to, and that's fine, Brad. I'm curious to see your input. But for Joanna's, sort of, I think I want to answer her question is, I know you want to be part of this, okay? You probably want to be like most of us who first came on council, part of every committee, okay? But it is your right to go as a council member or as a citizen to show up for these meetings. And I would assume you're going to be heard if you have some input. And I would almost guarantee you, if we do from this committee, everybody on this committee will listen to what you have to say. And I would encourage any, anybody who shows up to sort of listen to what they have to say. Because they make recommendations to what will be the central business district committee, which will then make a recommendation for a final decision by council if needed. So, yeah, we make these advisory boards, but anybody can attend and anybody can have input into it.
I guess I was making the remark because I am a business owner. I'm also an artist and I have a business downtown. And I am all for art.
See?
And I don't see a lot of art downtown.
This will be something you can show up and throw your input into it.
Very good. So would it help to provide the council with a small, I mean, I know all these people. I know what they do.
Sure.
Maybe, I mean, like Katie Shepherd is the one who's complaining all of the murals over in Cambria, over in that area. Paula, when she didn't.
She was the director of library assistant.
Yes, for the town. Charlie, we know Charlie. Heather Browning is from Blacksburg. And Dakota, I'm not, well, Heather lives in Christiansburg, the short of town of Blacksburg. And Dakota Spradlin?
She's a young artist.
Young artist, okay.
You know, we are, I think the town is, and maybe is a number of people who are responsible for this. But how much more the town of Christiansburg is getting involved in the arts? And this coming weekend is probably the biggest one that they've ever had. And you know, Great Roads, it's going to be Friday from 1:00 to 5:00 and then Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00, Ernie?
I think so, but in the five also.
Okay. And there are 22 artists that are going to be there. And it's just a tremendous program that's being delivered by, by a number of different people. And Ernie, I think is one of the, the directors. Have you got anything to add to what I just said, Ernie?
No, it is a big event. It's the third year we have it. It's, it's a little better over the year and hopefully it's going to be even, even better this year.
And it is free admission. And the artists will have product for sale, which is still going.
Museums, gift shop will be open. There'll be food for sale, wine for sale. And there'll be entertainment all day long on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we move into discussion and action by mayor? Yes?
I'd make a point of clarification. Would council, you would prefer some bios? Would you like the appointees to be, potential appointees to be invited to the next meeting?
I'd be lovely. I'm afraid if we have not taken a vote though, I'd hate to have them in the audience and then not meet them. So I'd like to wait myself.
After.
Yeah.
So I will provide the bios as requested.
That's typical of our requirements for any board member to show up.
I think you had, what, 17 applicants?
Eighteen, I believe.
Eighteen, so it's a pretty good, pretty good list. Okay.
And as I talked to, to folks today, that submitted applications that were not part of this list, they were still very excited and encouraging about being involved as well at, at some level in the future. So they're, they're really using a lot of interest out there.
Okay, very good.
I want to, I'm sorry, I want to make a statement. I'm not questioning, and I don't know several of these folks. I'm not questioning the committee's judgment on this at all. I just want to have some discussion about are we limiting ourselves a little bit? And maybe just about the structure of this.
Sure.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I would rather.
I don't have any reservations with the names that have been presented because I don't know, you know, I trust.
Absolutely.
I haven't gotten, we haven't gotten any discussions. You want to talk about under central business? You want to talk about under discussion?
Central business.
Okay. Under central business, there's one other addition, which is the downtown clock.
Yes, all right. I asked, I put this on the agenda because back in December, the central business committee made a recommendation to town council to remove the clock from downtown and replace it with some type of signage. That recommendation was made on information we had at that time, all right? Since then, additional information has come forward to, to the town camp, to us, emails and so forth. Based on that, I would like for us, central business, to withdraw our motion and for this to be sent back to central business for more reviews. And we'll bring it forward after that. And once again, everyone's come to those meetings. But we made our decision based on information we had at that time.
Right. And make a motion without we.
I would, I would second that. I also like, I know how we voted last Christmas and afterwards I thought, why did I vote that way? I, I didn't vote the right way. I, I think the clock is, is an important little piece of property here for the town of Christiansburg. And I've talked to Mr. Wakefield during the last couple of weeks. And I told him that, he gave me the idea of putting in a new clock would cost approximately $6,000. And I told him that I would try to see if I could generate $3,000 if the downtown committee wanted me to do something like that. But I, I would like to push for it and so that we, that clock stays there. And I think it's just a real good addition and that it works.
So that was a second to put us back into the central business committee.
So a second. Got a motion and a second to place it back in.
That was a long second.
We talked about.
I'm just curious. I know where it is and this is, I'm curious to see what comes back because I know Ms. Hicks has some ideas about it. I'll do. If I show hands in the audience, everybody know there's a clock downtown? All right, good, good. Because I've done that before. Nobody's raised their hand.
But not the initial one at the bank.
And I do think.
The one on the pole, yeah.
In a lot of information.
I paid them all five bucks.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move it back to central?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Under discussion by mayor and discussion and action by mayor and council. Again, this is a used to be request by Stephen LaPlatte, applicant property owned by Raz LLC for residential use, permitted in the R3 multifamily residential district at 1305 Radford Street Northwest, tax map 252-2-49B, in the B3 general business district. He's permitted in the R3 multifamily residential district, include single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling town, two-family dwellings, townhouses and multiple family dwellings at a density of development of up to 20 units per acre. Property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map, the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing was held on January the 28th. And I believe we had a citizen asked consideration, your consideration of. And I believe we had a citizen asked consideration, your consideration of a privacy fence. Karen, go ahead.
Karen LaFonte. Yes, my husband and I own that property and I apologize, he can't be here again. He's been out of town for work. I believe that good fences make good neighbors, so certainly not a problem with that. I have been through there and as I said before, the fence does go all the way back around. But what Mr. Bentley is talking about, there's about 60, maybe 70 feet, but there is no fence. I know that there are poles, like supports, so I don't know that there's been a fence there where he would know. But actually, the asphalt from his driveway and the driveway on our property looks like it's been paved multiple times. There is a section that is not. It is still asphalt, but it is not near thick. So it's certainly a good place to be able to put something in there like where the fence used to be.
And you'd be willing to accommodate him on that?
Sure. I think that actually the specifics, I would like to be able to speak with him directly. Because sitting behind the business and there's trees behind that business, if we put something up really tall, there may not be any light on his house. So that's something I notice, I don't know which way the sun comes in. But you know, there's, you have things blocking in front of your house. So I don't know what would be work that would still be, you know, you have some light coming that side.
I also have to mention, I was part of the planning commission during some of her meetings that she came to council, well, to not council, but to that committee. And I know that this was a business commercial. And now she's trying to change it into four apartments. So you're talking about you went from commercial having probably more traffic coming in, now moving into four apartments. I would say four apartments, probably four, eight people, max 10 people. If you, that's the only part that does not have a fence. And if you're saying that you can accommodate a fence and try to put a fence in there, I think that would be something that I would like for you guys to try to figure out. Is that something that you guys think that you can figure out between each other?
So just before we have two options, we can approve it.
As is.
As is, or we can table it another two weeks until you all have had time to make your decisions of what you want to need or where to go from here. I mean, are you all comfortable enough that you're agreeing you will build the fence and you will be reasonable as far as the height with her?
Yep.
I mean, is that a gentleman's agreement? Lady and gentlemen's agreement?
Yes, because I haven't had the opportunity to meet Cody until tonight since I said I met his mother at the last one, I was his mother and we chatted about it briefly. But yes, I mean, I certainly would like to be with him and see what he would like, yes.
At the last meeting, we, you mentioned, and I actually, Mr. Scholter and I actually went to the planning commission. We were very impressed with our planning commission. But that particular meeting, you had mentioned that time is not, I mean, you're not, two weeks would not hurt you, is that correct?
It would not hurt me. I would like not to have to come to any more meetings.
Are you sure? But the point is, personally, I think if you two could come to mutually agreeable solution and then we could just make that for both of your interests is to make sure that our final action is clear on that.
And we can, sir, I will say that my husband's out of town for three months actually in Georgia.
Oh, wow.
He is an engineer and he is going to be able to look at it a little bit better and tell actually how we need to do that fence and to speak with Cody as well. So I would hate to think, go out and get bids and figure things to put up a fence. And the two weeks between now and then, I would like to have the opportunity for us to take our time. We are not in a hurry to develop the property. Obviously, if he's still gone, I'm waiting for him to come back before we even do anything.
Could we take action contingent on a mutually agreeable solution for a privacy fence? Then we could do that. We could take, if, you know, if council's pleasure, we could take that contingent on a mutually agreeable solution that you both arrive at together.
Because the reality is that, as you well remember, probably you remember this, they tried to sell the property for a long time, they weren't able to. They tried to rent it as a commercial, they weren't able to. And then now, this is the only financial decision that they can make that it will make some sense for what they got. Plus, we are short in housing for a lot of people right now. And I think this will be a good thing for our community. So I will make a motion that we can pass this with the agreement that you guys will talk and figure something out.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass this article, subject to...
A mutually agreeable resolution.
Good fences and good neighbors.
There you go.
Okay, so, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Karen, and Karen, thank you, sir.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good. Quonis Club of Christiansburg requests for September 19th, 2020, street closures for Wilderness Trail.
I make a motion that we approve the Quonis Club request for September 19th, 2020, street closures for Wilderness Trail Festival.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion, hearing none, would you call our place?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Next is small changes, changes to small purchasing procedures. Mr. Wingfield, this one yours?
Yes. Looked at, basically proposed changes to the purchasing policy. We did make changes recently in regards to policies and we lowered threshold for purchases for a threshold for three quotes to 1,500 from 5,000 previously. State did make a change this past year that enables us to go to 10,000 from that threshold. You know, it's our policy, we can set it at any point up to 10,000. But basically, it's council's discretion as to where to set it. With the recent change from 5,000 to 1,500, we have had some purchasing problems in that we feel we have had to probably lose a few local purchase vendors. And also, we do have more time invested in the purchasing process because they're having to get more quotes and have more documentation because of lower threshold. As I think I've mentioned to a few of you, we do kind of have competing goals sometimes when you have the desire to purchase locally and also the desire to get the best deal from the town. And I think that's kind of what you're up against with the policy and where to set the threshold. And it is council's decision where to set it. Staff feels the higher the threshold, the more easily we can purchase locally. Because basically, we're free to go local up to 10,000 with the higher threshold. And in particular, it's less work for staff to have to have the higher threshold. It doesn't mean that we still wouldn't try to get good deals and try to get low prices. But basically, the, we would have, and one quote we would have to have is a local quote under 10,000. So we'd still have to get a local quote, if possible, under 10,000.
So I guess the question here will be, do we want to go up to 10,000 or 5,000?
What's the recommendation about?
Staff, staff would be happy with 10,000 if that's your wishes.
I'm alright with it.
I have no questions.
I'm okay.
Good. Okay, so do I have a motion to increase the, to 10,000?
To move.
Aye, second.
Got a motion and a second? Hearing no discussion.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution. We have a resolution recognizing Barry and Adrian Bowling.
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry, but...
There's a copy.
Sorry. Barry and Adrian Bowling, Bowling Creative Media. I think I mentioned at the last meeting how we really appreciated what they're doing for the town. They made some videos to explain how to recycle, they worked with Merswa on that. They're also volunteering all of their time and energy into the rally grant downtown to archive the pocket park that's being created, which is going to be wonderful. So I wanted to do a little bit more than just acknowledge a thank you last time. So we had discussed to Randy about doing a resolution to formally thank them. And council, I'm asking for your approval to pass this tonight and present it to him at next meeting.
So be it.
Or them, I'm sorry, not just him.
So a first and second.
The first and second. Any comments or questions, hearing none, Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good. Staff reports, town manager?
Give you that name of Huckleberry Trail. We have a schedule for completion of the Cambria Trail study. But first, we'll be talking about Huckleberry Trail. Basically, for construction on North Franklin Street, you can see they have the fencing on North Franklin. And we're in the process, contractors working on extending it down Independence Boulevard. And it will go to Gold Leaf Drive. Paving is scheduled basically start early spring and completion is scheduled late spring, early summer.
Very good.
The Cambria Trail connection, basically, that would be engineered study beginning, it's underway now for application process. It's scheduled to go until, well, submitals due October 2021. And basically, Phase 1 development's at 10 or 15% level right now. Scheduled accounts for approximately one year for right away acquisition from Norfolk Southern because we do think that's going to be difficult. Phase 2 will begin at Cambria Square and terminate at Phase 1, will extend to Renick Street. The connection to Quonis Park is also under consideration as part of Phase 2. But again, timeline on that is through October of 2021 is when we would actually submit grant application.
Is that any money on the budget to have trees planted on the side of the walking trails where we have?
We do have kind of general landscaping money built into the budget. And Parks and Rec kind of built some landscaping into their general budget. So, you know, in regards to small amount of landscaping, we can kind of do that within general budget. If we want like a large landscaping project, we're not going to try to do it as a capital project. But just a matter of a few trees, that's going to be built in. And we're, you know, the Cambria Trail, we're talking new construction, so that'd be built in the construction cost. Also, just give you a little update on what the county in Blacksburg are doing. Of course, the county's been working on Valley to Valley Trails. That's a regional partnership between the Newer Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Renick Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's a Newer Valley Regional Commission and the Renick Regional Commission, and of course, VDOT. They have Michael Baker as a consultant for that project. And the goal of the study is to identify the best route, cost estimate, conception for a future trail to connect the two valleys. That study is anticipated to take eight to 10 months. And Blacksburg has recently completed extension of the Huckleberry Trail from Prices Fort to Glade Road. And also mentioned that Newer Valley Land Trust has purchased two properties that make up a 553-acre track that they plan to park on. And they're working with town of Blacksburg now to basically develop trails to the northwest edge of Blacksburg to connect to this park. We do have a joint meeting with the Blacksburg Walkway Committee next Tuesday with our own Bike Way Walkway Committee. Anybody's free to attend next, again, this coming Wednesday, not tomorrow, but...
It's the 19th?
The 19th.
So it'll be, is that Wednesday?
Wednesday.
What time?
7:30.
7:30.
Is it here or there or?
It's in Blacksburg.
In Blacksburg.
AM or PM?
AM.
It was here two years ago.
Randy, on the Trail to Trail, I mean, are they in the study or are they planning to do the study?
Well, they have a consultant for the study. I don't think the study has officially started yet.
Okay.
Is that through the MPO?
Yes.
That's fantastic news. I didn't know, I didn't know that study was underway, that's a good update.
Do they have an anticipation date of starting that?
I can't tell you, only like I say, they've got a consultant on board.
They're just a consultant.
That's great.
But I'd imagine the next couple of months.
Okay. Will you keep us up to date when they start it?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Randy, the Cambria Trail then, the October 2021 date, why is that magical? Is that because of the...
That is the smittle for the grant application.
Is that because of smart scale or is that because, is that transportation alternatives funding or?
It's transportation alternatives.
So it was showing NTA at that time.
Okay, so that, it's not this year, it's a biennium?
Correct. Basically, that Phase 1 was applied for this past fall.
Okay, so it's a bi, okay, so it's every other year, okay. Okay, thank you.
Transportation alternatives is 80% VDOT and 20% local.
Which is what most of our Huckleberry built with, with the 80/20 match. Thanks for that update, Randy.
Also, just giving you an update on the events coordinator. We plan on advertising the position next week and we would hope to have them on board by the end of next month. Also, kind of give you an idea of farmers market and how we plan on handling that. Council did give us the directive, I guess, in the fall, to maintain the farmers market down there this coming season. The storm drain project will begin after the farmers market season, so we're safe to have it there. And let you know, staff does have experience, Michelle Trossel and Morgan Fitten have handled the farmers market as market managers. We're going to need to be doing outreach though to the farmers market vendors and things. So we're basically preparing to do that with current staff if necessary.
I would love to revisit the thing about the farmers market downtown and see if we can come with an agreement that we can look possibly a different location. I know there is grants and things like that that we can use. But in the meantime, I know there is going to be construction downtown and stuff like that for several years. I would really like to see, maybe even open it to the public and maybe like the livestock place, maybe do they want to have a place there for the farmers market? Or maybe we can have it across the street in the new property that we purchased across the street from the Aquatic Center? Or can we just somehow have it somewhere else so we can provide more of that service to the rest of the community, so it's not just for a few people that come downtown to the farmers market during those days? I know that that's part of my community a little bit within parks and recreation. But then it comes out of our budget from parks and recreation. So I would like to see if we can get more for our money. And I know that maybe Hickok Street, I would like to revisit the idea of just thinking about maybe another location instead of using Hickok Street.
You mean a permanent location or a temporary one?
Well, I think for all, I think, you know, I think me going to the farmers market, I pretty much tried to go every time, every week during the open season. And I didn't see the amount of people that we should expect for a farmers market. I mean, it was pretty empty. And I feel bad not just for, for the people that I have to go, for the vendors. I mean, that's just a lot to put on them.
You were at the last meeting, and I forgot her name, but she was part of the development of the farmers market. And I think the conversation is a good one. But I think it should possibly go back to the farmers market committee and originate there and have that discussion. And then that committee has now been put into Central Business. And then a recommendation could be made to council if you all agree that that's the best way to have.
Those committee member members still available? Or can, Mike, you sort of saw that, I'm leaning on you, yeah. You sort of put that together.
You ordered me to have a farmer's market six years ago.
Well, it wasn't me, it was the council.
Well, we did have one and it is a very good, I don't know, I mean, I think the... There is a list of the market members now, which were sent out in the meeting. Be a good time, you know, I don't know, if and when, if we decide for any way, shape or form, and I'm opposed to moving it out of town, but if we were to decide to move it, we need to make that decision soon because why go through this, all this research and the grant money we're trying to get to build the buildings down there?
Right.
So...
I agree. You know, like parks and recreational, the parks department, the recreational center that we have, you know, it has, it provides services to over 8,000 people every month. The farmers market is barely producing anything for our community. So we can do a lot more, I think, with that amount of money that we're spending downtown. I think, with that amount of money that we're spending downtown. Plus, you know, health and public works is over there cleaning up and setting up, and we have Andrew going over there, we have several people from our town that work for Town Hall going over there and present, you know, taking their time to do that, so.
That's part of what comes with it. However, I understand that, but I'm not, unless I see some, something that looks a whole lot better, and you talk about the rec center, there is absolutely, there's a lot of cars, but there's no parking, if that's going to, depending on where that thing's being held. Right now's not a good time to consider anything over there with the construction going on. There are other areas down, down on Renick Road that I, well, one piece of property we own, and that's when we look at. So anyway, let's, let's see what the Farmers Market, we're kind of committed to have it downtown this year, I think.
Yeah, it's a sixty-four thousand dollar question. Well, actually, that was sort of a joke, maybe, I don't know how many dollars of a question it is. It's a good point, and it's a good point, we want more traffic and so forth, and the question is, is it the location that's the problem? Is that, you know, it's a great question, but it, it's not a decision we should make lightly, it's a decision we should really.
We should think about it, and we should really.
It is, it's a good question, and I don't know the answer to it, but.
I don't think we.
When you talked about.
I think, you know, maybe at some point, we just need to discuss, we're going to continue with Farmers Market. You know, that may be the whole thing there, and then you can open it up to someone who wants to start one and take care of that stuff, but we have, we've tried very hard. I think one of the things is advertising. When we first opened up, we had a lot of road signs and things, and attendance was really good. We haven't had that luxury, and hopefully, some of these new signs that we're putting up, particularly Aquatic Center, some of these others, we'll be able, because, I forgot. Now, Thursday's not the greatest day maybe, but none of the vendors that service us can come on Fridays or Saturdays, because they have other, at least two or three other Farmers Markets.
And then by the time it closes, you know, people are just getting out of work. It's not the right time, I mean, they close around six to seven, no, they're starting to pick up stuff by six o'clock. So by the time people make it there, you know, pick up their kids or whatever, they do stuff. When I was talking about the recs department, I wasn't talking about having it there, even though that may be a good option later on, but I was talking about how we are serving over eight thousand people at that facility, and yet at the Farmers Market, we're trying to do something for the community, and we're only serving a few.
Okay, point taken, thank you.
Hold it. I know this is, do you anticipate the Farmers Market to be equal to what Salem, Floyd, and Blacksburg have?
No, I'm not actually expecting anything out of the Farmers Market. I don't even think we should open one right now when we have so much competition. We got Floyd, we got Salem, we got Blacksburg, and those are, I mean, I go to those places and they're vibrant, and they're at the right locations. I mean, people push for those places. I mean, you got Virginia Tech, it's, the location is pretty convenient, you got a lot of thousands of students that are walking to those streets. It's, I mean, I'm amazed of what they have done in Blacksburg, but I don't see our Farmers Market going anywhere here in Christiansburg and not in Hickok Street.
I did, I had the similar concern that you had, that ours was not as vibrant as Blacksburg, so I did call and talk to them, and they said the major part that they faced is that they've been there a long time, and they've had the opportunity to develop it a lot longer than we have. So we had a great conversation about the pros and the cons of their market versus ours. I think it's a great conversation to have, and one that maybe should be, well, again, put into a meeting, a committee, where we can have a conversation just about that, and spend the hour or whatever, talking about choices.
There's more than an hour, because I can tell you, we have a business down there, and it has affected us tremendously. It has affected, you know, Andrew had several meetings downtown with the business owners that own property downtown, and I tell you, everybody in there besides like one person, they were all against that. Why? Because it's affecting us directly. This is a street that it was a major street for us to cross over, to get from one place to go to another, and that's where the majority of our banks are. I use three banks a day, and I tell you, it's so hard to get around there. Makaroo's had a problem for a while, you know, everybody just still turns the signals to go to that direction.
Okay, I think we'll move on from here. Randy?
Let you know that Montgomery County passed the flow control ordinance last night.
What was that though?
I don't know.
Six one.
Six one? Okay.
And let you know, also, the Water Suburso Waste Stormwater Committee had instructed staff to basically begin our utility cutoff notices at seven thirty, it's going to be doing utility cutoff officially.
AM.
Yeah, AM.
AM, okay.
And also let you know, I did send you an email this afternoon in regards to retreat, if you just take a look and.
Okay, very good. Any other department heads?
I was going to reply to that. I think we should not be renting a space somewhere else to have.
That would come under your council discussions next, under council reports?
I just think we should have those meetings here during Town Hall, so we don't have to pay for those services somewhere else.
I think Kevin's planning a charter.
We're not chartering, we're getting the free run out of that, because we are members of the Regional Commission, and do pay them money every year for, for their services, and the caterer is out of Christiansburg. All right, anything else? Will?
Yeah. Apologies for circling back, but for our records and for the applicants, the CEP that was just approved tonight, that was a motion with the fence condition, I didn't catch that, also included the motion that was, or the recommendation with the condition recommended by planning commission, which would have kept the number of units to twelve if it was used as multi-family.
I think we approved the.
Approved for?
Approved it as it was presented to council with the additional.
With the recommendation.
Understanding that it was contingent.
As well as the fence condition.
You have some additional condition?
An additional condition, thanks.
Very good.
Provided by, yeah.
Yes.
Any other staff? Counsel, Ms. Hicks?
I, like I said, I think we should have the meeting here in Town Hall, so citizens of the Town of Christiansburg, if they want to come through the door, they can come in and start.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop? I don't have that. Mr. Scholl? Mr. Snipes?
Have a brief report on the Airport Commission. If Mr. Michael, or Michael Saint, the airport is very, very busy right now, and I've been in several meetings between November and now, including earlier today. So there is a request for an increase of ten thousand dollars for our annual contribution, which has been unchanged for twenty years. At fifty thousand, it's the same as Montgomery County and Town of Blacksburg and Virginia Tech put into it. The airport improvements will be wrapping up this year. It's a multimillion dollar project with absolutely almost no money, local money doing to that, it's going to have some great benefits to us.
My question before council is, if it's council's pleasure, we can have Mr. St. Jean come in for a brief presentation.
Good.
Okay. To explain that, you know, now before, the budget request, just explain, he does, he has a presentation, and I will request him to keep that to five minutes, ten minutes? I'm trying to be respectful of your time, but if it's council's pleasure, I will have him, we will invite or request that he come to.
Ten minutes is a reasonable time.
Ten minutes, okay. And so, and Mr. St. Jean is retiring, he made that announcement today, he's retiring on May thirty-first, and we will be seeking a new executive director for that position. It's going to be a very important position.
So this is for the NRV Airport?
No, this is for the.
Virginia Tech Airport.
Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, of which we're one quarter owners.
Now, the extension of the runway, has it been completed?
Yes, it's underway, it's being wrapped up this season, and it will be extended to fifty-five hundred feet, and that's a, that's going to accommodate corporate jets, larger corporate jets. And anyway, that's the update on that, so.
I guess the question would be for him or for you? Why do we pay ten thousand dollars to the airport every year?
We pay fifty a year by agreement. It's an operational expense, yeah.
We have a, I don't know how many million dollar resource there that we're part owner in for a very small amount of money that benefits us directly here in Christiansburg through corporate attraction, economic development. It's a primary screening, it's airport service, especially executive airport service, if you want a top-tier company, it's one of, it's a, it's a top screening criteria that, so it's, it's a, it's a regional benefit, and it's something that we can participate in for a very low level of investment to have an asset like that, especially on an annual basis, so.
Do we have reports of who uses that?
Sure, and in fact, if we have Mr. St. Jean here, you can ask some questions of that, and maybe that'll sit some light on that, but having worked in economic development my background, I do realize the benefit, the regional benefit of having a resource and an asset like that for a very low cost. And it also, us being a regional, regionally owned airport leverages us for a lot of state and federal money that we would not be able to, to get if it was not a multi-jurisdictional airport, same as the Newer Valley Airport.
And I'll point out that we're considering authority model for passenger rail here in our potential future rail station.
How does that relate to the airport expense of fifty thousand dollars a year?
It'd be, it'd be a similar setup, and outside localities would be contributing for a facility here in town.
But I thought that that's on the hold, and we're not going to get a train station right now.
It is on hold, I think, I'm still hopeful that we will have a train station here.
When I was in Richmond, they said no.
Depends on who you talk to.
Well, it's all up to Norfolk, whatever Norfolk wants to want.
It's pretty much. Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah, thank you. I guess you've all been by the Aquatic Center, you know, as you drive by so far this month, and I wanted to go over and give you a quick rundown of some of the things that the revenue that the Aquatic Center is producing. Right now, we have a lot of end of the year swim meets, and I'm just going to go over real quickly here. On February seventh to the ninth, Virginia Tech had an invitational meet, and they had teams from all of the East Coast, and they were here for three days. And then yesterday, the Class Five, Region Four of the High School Championship was held at the pool in the morning, and in the evening, there was the Regional Diving Meet was, was held there. Now, today, the Class Four, Region Five Meet was held, and this evening, Christiansburg hosted the Class Three, Region D Championship. And then coming up on the thirteenth to the fifteenth, there's going to be about seven hundred high school swimmers from across the state will be here for swimming championship. And then on the eighteenth and nineteenth, there'll be four consecutive, for the fourth consecutive year, the Christiansburg Aquatic Center will be hosting the Colonial Athletic District Championship, and this consists of teams like University of Delaware, Drexel, James Madison, North Carolina, Wellington, Northeastern, Townsend, and the College of Wounded Mary. So we have all these teams coming in for four days, and of course, they've got to stay here for three nights. And then on February twenty-eighth to the March first, another three-day meet for the USA Swim Regional Championship. So if you have not had a chance to go down there, if you go down to one of these meets, they're all very well-run, and so far too, the leisure pool has been open for regular citizens if they want to swim there. But I thought people just might want to know that, some of the things that are going on the pool this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Ms. Snipes?
Something to say after him is I encourage all of the businesses to take advantage of all these people that are coming into town. They have to eat somewhere, they stay somewhere, they want to maybe go see a movie, do another attraction. Now's the time to really step up and try to market yourself to the Aquatic Center. I did want to mention, while we were in our meeting discussing the cutoff times for paying your utilities, that I thought these numbers were interesting. There's two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty water cutoffs a month. That's a lot for our public works to handle, so first, thank you for that, because I also learned that if you make your payment by seven o'clock, your services are turned back on, what, before midnight, Jim?
Before seven p.m.
Yeah, if you make your payment by seven.
That's correct.
Then it's turned back on by midnight, which is an excellent service that they do after hours for everybody. So if, if I could ask the public anything, it's please back up your time to pay your utilities, even a day, even a few hours, it's going to make a huge difference, so they can schedule their day a little bit better, and, you know, go fix potholes and roads and other things that they need to do, other than turning off water off now. I did also want to let council know that I was researching the flow control, and of course, this, this falls under the committee that I'm in already with Mr. Scholl Walter, and I ran across this code that I would really recommend everybody reading before we discuss the flow control at the next meeting. It's fifteen point two dash nine thirty-one. It's the Regulation of Garbage and Refuse Pickup and Disposal Services Contracting for Such Services in Certain Localities. It's a very good read, great information. And?
It's date code?
Yes.
Code Virginia, yes. Yeah, here, if you want, just might have to go. Yeah, you can keep it, sure. And Mrs. Hicks and myself were both in Richmond this last week, talking to our legislators for Legislative Day, and I think it was extremely productive. We got the chance to talk about stormwater fees, broadband, affordable housing, multiple topics. So I just wanted to comment that that was a very good trip as well. That's all I have.
I'd like to piggyback on the committee a little bit, is just a little bit on the water turnoff policy. It was discussed in committee with Val and a few, a few of our staff members, Randy, and of course, Angel was there as well, and Ms. Hicks. But the policy we have for the cutoff is a sound one, and something that, I mean, the time that, the only thing we, we recommend of the change is just the seven thirty of the day of cutoff. But I do want to reiterate that the town does work very hard, that if people come in and pay their bill, even on the cutoff date, that our public work staff works, can work until midnight to make sure that if they do pay their bill, even on that date and with penalties, that their water will be cut back on, which I think is a, hats off to them to make sure that, that occurs.
Very much.
There is one more thing we discussed, is in the stormwater utility. You want to weigh in on that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, well, this is one of the passions of mine when I got on council, which was the stormwater utility fee structure. I researched it, got a lot of information from Randy, and there was a committee created to come up with a structure that we currently have. And what I noticed, though, is that this committee didn't have any small businesses on it, and when I looked at the structure, if you added five hundred, three hundred, could be up to eighteen hundred dollars, to a business's expenses every month because they have a parking lot, that can be very detrimental. But I know that the town has an obligation through environmental quality to provide and get up to speed with what we need to do. So there's no quick, easy fix for this, but we have discussed creating a committee to discuss it, and that could be citizens, business owners, people from the town, and we'd like to get input from all areas and just review our fee. Are we up to date? Does it make sense? Is it affordable? There are other things in the economy right now that are expected to show its head right around election time, and we want to be prepared for these changes with small businesses. We don't want the speed to put them under, coupled with increases in wages that's now going to take place July of this summer. So it could be very crippling to some businesses, and we just want to, in the committee, take a look and make sure that it's fair, and so we hope that that'll be coming soon.
Well, it's actually more than that.
Yeah, go ahead, finish.
This is on, this is, it's been about five years, am I correct on that? It took the original Stormwater Committee, composed of citizens and businesses, even though they are larger ones, took them about six to eight months to come up with this. I remember being on council, coming to the public hearings. So it's really on council right now. It's a council decision whether to form a committee, okay? I'm sure it's not going to happen overnight, there's going to have to be some discussion who's going to be on it, and. And I would prefer some small business owners to be on there as well, along with some citizens. As you look at the residents, even though they don't own businesses, they pay the, they do pay more of the stormwater fee. So it's a recommendation that we do form a committee to look at it. This is going to be a long process. It's not going to be a few weeks. And, but it's at the pleasure of council whether we do. So as a recommendation from the Water Sewer Solid Waste Stormwater Committee, we make a recommendation that we do form a new committee. So it's really up to council whether we do or at this point.
Sorry, I missed that comment.
No worries.
You're good. I'm glad you kicked in.
Okay.
I'll accept the committee's recommendation. I do think, I will say the one we did five years ago, the committee that was assembled was quite impressive. It was well represented. But like other things, some time has passed. We should certainly support the committee's recommendation to do that and hope that we get as diverse a committee as we did before.
Very good.
Do we need to vote on this as a council to form this? Because I want to, I want to hear from everybody here.
General consensus is fine, but if you'd like to vote, that's fine too.
Well...
Mr. Scholl, I'll let you chair that committee to form that group. And with recommendations, I guess we can do an application or advertisement of interest, interested parties?
Was everybody under the agreement to form one?
I think so.
Yeah?
I think what I'm having a hard time is I do have a lot of, several commercial properties too. And so I would love to be a part of it. And I think I would love to be a part of it just because I'm a local business owner. But I think, what do we do when, I mean, that would be an interest right there for me to, you know, like, I don't want to get in trouble either. So I guess when I'm asking about that and you have other local business owners that are going to have this thing, even though they're not elected officials, they're still, how, because I know we have different rights for some people that are getting discounts and things like that. I don't want to mess up with that.
Even though Mike volunteered me to chair it, okay? That doesn't mean that entirely is going to happen. I think the last committee we had was very independent of council, which makes it very important to get the voice of our constituents. And that's not only which the residents who put us in office, but the business owners out there. We want input from them too. So I don't think this is necessarily going to fall under the Water Sewer Solid Waste Stormwater Committee because this is going to be a council stormwater committee that gets appointed and makes a recommendation to us, much like the last one. I don't think it went through. Mike, were you on that committee when it came through last time? Randy, did it come, I don't think it came to a council committee. It came straight to council.
Jim Van Huger was the council representative on the Stormwater Utility Committee.
All right. So I would, since we've all agreed to it, I would turn it over to staff to sort of put something together on the type of members we want, how we want to pursue getting those members. And then we go from there. So if you could report back at our, in two weeks on how we're going to push forward with it, that would be great.
Very good. Randy, I'll be in and out every night, chat about it.
And as far as the airport, can we get, is it okay with council if we have Mr. St. Jean come on the second meeting in March? Okay. Just to get that in permission.
Is there any other business to come for council? Hearing none?
We may do something for Mr. St. later. I'm not sure if it'll be a...
You can put Stephen in charge of that if you want.
There's nothing else to come for council? We are through. Thank you.